...solicitation process. Texas Local Government Code allows municipalities to invoke emergency procurement as per section two fifty-two point zero zero, zero two-two general exemptions. Uh, in response to COVID nineteen pandemic, the city rec- uh, staff recommends authorizing the city manager the ability to approve contract services above thirty-five thousand under the local government code mentioned. On general provisions exemptions for COVID nineteen related expenditures.
Um, this is an action that, um, is there gonna be any other presentation on this?
No, sir.
Okay, do you have any motions?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second, second.
I think we need some discussion.
Do we have a decision to add on the? I know we have a motion and a second, um, let's discuss the items, anybody want to discuss?
Um, I think Commissioner Nice was trying to say something, but his voice is breaking up.
Okay.
And if not, then, um, I would just like to know though, is there a ceiling? Um, can, uh, we can't, I, I have everyone's con- well, being, um, in, in mind, but at the same time, I don't think that we can just, um, not put any caps on, on how much spending. Like, I, I don't mind saying, okay, within the next week, um, you're authorized to go up to two hundred thousand dollars or, um, I don't know, uh, but I can't just see not putting a limit.
Mr. Bernal?
That'd be, certainly not, that's conditions, certainly the, our commission's expression. At this point, we're about a week into this pandemic, at least locally, and this is providing us flexibility. And I know there's going to be a meeting, uh, pushing into September, April. That should be, uh, that should remain as scheduled with the finish forms to have some type of.
It sounds good.
That can be reexamined at that point. That's, that's very doable. Um, it's very difficult to provide, uh, information in terms of the types of costs that we're seeing. Uh, we can share some of our experiences for trying to get, uh, personal protective equipment and things of that sort, trying to get testing started. But some of these costs are still very, very fluid and unknown. This is, give us flexibility at this point where we are. I, I have a question, so, go ahead, question, go ahead.
Noel, do you have a number, a suggestion for us?
We, what, so just to give you all a rough order, so for the immigrant influx over a twelve-month period, uh, and Lupe, help me out here, but I, I believe we exceeded a quarter million dollars over the first six months, if I'm not mistaken, Lupe?
That's a good, that's, that's a correct amount, sir.
Okay, so, and, and this is very different. I'm just trying to give, give ourselves a point of reference from just last year. That's how long we were able to go with two fifty. That wouldn't be a bad number to start, assuming that there's some type of correlation to the immigrant inputs and might give us some latitude. I would, I would think the two fifty would give us some latitude between now and April seventh, where we'll know a lot more.
That's fair. Um, Commissioner McGinn, you have?
Yes, and just to confirm, so if this happens within, you go over the two fifty within a week, do we have to have another emergency meeting so that you can be able to provide the, uh, sorely needed, uh, assistance to the citizens of Brownsville?
You would not, oh, I'm sorry, if, if you give us a ceiling, then yes, yes, we, we would. We would be limited to that amount between now and the next meeting day, uh, when y'all would be able to, um, increase that amount.
My only concern is, from the beginning, every day that passes by, we have different information or different standards from the CDC. And very quickly in other cities, we have seen it escalate through the roof, um, in three or four days. And my only concern, um, of course, is money being spent correctly. But this is a life or death situation, and I just don't wanna tie my hands up or put myself in a situation where we need to order beds or we need to order some type of materials or things like this, and we have a low ceiling, um. I would like to see a number that, um, I would feel comfortable, that if we were to see numbers very rocket in our city, that everybody would be taken care of as soon as possible, and we wouldn't have to post a meeting and have these twenty-four hours. I don't foresee it happening, but it could happen based on what we've seen in other cities, and that's my only concern.
Do you have one?
What, got a, got a question and input, um, thi- this would be on a per-contract basis. This, this wouldn't mean the, the amount, the ceiling to spend on this COVID nineteen, uh, activities. We're, we're talking about if there's any particular, uh, procurement where there's proc- procurement of, of supplies, procurement of, uh, or contract services. This would be on an individual contract basis, not the total.
In a, okay.
That's what I, that's what I'm, I'm.
Enter your participant ID.
I have two, one, two, three, seven.
You are in the meeting now. There are more than fifty participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
I'm sorry, then.
Okay, cool. I feel like I'm going in from, from phase, this is getting, uh, from, from. Can you all hear me? Whoever's speaking.
I'm a teacher. Sorry.
Um, Mr. Bernal, um, do you have any input as to what, um, some of these items being discussed or the spending limits, is it your anticipation that some of these items will be reimbursed, uh, in some manner?
We're, we're not aware. The team have been released a fact sheet on public assistance and what is reimbursable and what is not reimbursable. At this time, we would need to review some of that. I'm, I'm looking at some of those demos right now, but there, there isn't a lot of information as of today.
Well, there were different guidelines and, and topics as to what general things were reimbursable. Did you look at that?
What we found, uh, for example, for the immigrant influx, we weren't aware of what was reimbursable until, uh, months down the road. What we ended up doing and what we started doing in this situation also, as a lesson learned, is we're tracking a lot of costs already. So, we're tracking some, some sick leave issues, we're tracking current expenditures, we've counted it to COVID nineteen, just to be proactive, but some of the information on, on reimbursements, I think farmers' climate and plastic stimulus bills can speak. Some of that may be for public assistance, it is very, very preliminary to have a, a, a good sense of what's reimbursable.
Okay, well, I had a mo- I had a mo- in a sec, and we're still in discussion, but, um, any, any other discussion?
And I have one more question. So, uh, Mr. Bernal, you don't ha- anticipate having another meeting next week, at least to, you know, keep the public informed of what's going on?
A special meeting or a?
Well, it would have to be a special meeting, because the regular meeting's not scheduled until April.
Yeah, that, that would be up to the commission, uh, we can do that. If that's the request, we can do that.
I mean, to a certain extent, I would like to at least be out in the open, um, engaging with the public, at least in a forum like this, at least once a week, especially during, uh, a situation like that. If this technology works out, then I don't see why we shouldn't be at least, um, having a meeting once a week.
That's something, I think it'd very decent update, it's efficient, um, let's kind of play that by ear, but I don't see a problem with that at this point.
Do you want us to amend the motion? With the ceiling or, or, um, I'm, I'm fine with or without the ceiling for a week, without problem. Well, and then in terms of legal, uh, shouldn't there be a ceiling? The motion has to be pretty specific, it's too vague. Or, I'd like an opinion from the city attorney about that, if, if it's just, um.
I agree that it's very, very broad, and if you are interested in having parameters, uh, you can make a floor amendment at this time, including the ceiling. Um, my understanding, when deciding what's originally presented, uh, to my office, was that, uh, there was, uh, increasing the threshold, not necessarily by volume or amount, but by the, um, uh, the original threshold that the city manager had of thirty-five thousand before having to bring something to the commission. Uh, I'm not sure if that's still the intent, if it is, uh, I believe that's what maybe Lupe was trying to allude to, that they were trying to increase the, uh, the amount that could be processed by city manager from thirty-five thousand to fifty before having the item have to be brought back by, to the commission. So I think, uh, this is an opportunity for the commission to be clear about what it is that it's authorizing the city manager to be able, whether, uh, or by amount, uh, or by transaction, but I think that's what Lupe was meaning by, Lupe?
So the current motion on the floor is?
The current floor is as stated in the actual agenda, which is, uh, to approve the city manager to authorize purchases above the formal threshold. Uh, there's. So, um, Commissioner Tetra, was it you that made the motion?
I made the motion. I can withdraw or I can amend, it's up to the.
Mr. McGowan, I believe, was the second. Um, if you wish to amend your motion, Commissioner, you can. Um, based on Mr. Bernal's representation, this is a per-contract amount, so, uh, if you wish to amend your motion, uh, you can do so.
It's up to the commission, I mean, um, all.
I don't, yeah, threshold based on, on the.
Can y'all?
I'm sorry, Mayor, what did you say?
Uh, I don't see any, uh, an issue with the threshold that, that Commissioner Delance recommended, uh, especially considering, uh, Mr. McGowan's representation, it's a per-contract basis.
Okay, I'll make the motion to amend to, um, to include a ceiling of two hundred thousand dollars per contract.
We have a motion.
I second that, um, I second that.
We have a motion, uh, to cap, uh, as stated, two fifty, um, and a second, uh, any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye.
I'm gonna vote against.
Aye. You're voting against, Commissioner Galant?
I'm gonna vote.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
And just to let the public know that if we have to change that, we will come back immediately and do so, um, for the sake of the public and their safety.
May, may I have a roll call, Mayor? It wasn't clear to me, um, how the roll call happened.
Um, because of the technology, will anybody who's, who's an I, please raise your hand at this time? Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five Is. Anybody that's an A, please raise your hand? Commissioner Nice, I cannot see Commissioner Galant, oh, there you are. Okay, so that's, uh, five to two, uh, motion passes. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is, uh, consideration and action to approve city manager's delegated authority to the city's assistant city manager or municipal management coordinator for approval of purchases above the formal eight position threshold in response to COVID nineteen.
I would move to allow the city manager to delegate the responsibility to make expenditures related to COVID nineteen to the deputy city manager, to assistant city manager, and the emergency management coordinator. But the, each expenditure should be no, no more than fifty thousand dollars, those that are delegated.
We have a motion to have a second?
I'll take that.
No motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
One opposition, Commissioner Cowan? Okay, motion passes. Next item?
Item number three, consideration and action to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-eight, expanding the scope of services of the public health department.
Good evening, honorable Mayor Commissioners, uh, our department, uh, thus far has been providing services to the community functioning as an environmental health department. And environmental health department, I mean, like ordinance enforcement, code enforcement, and, and health inspections. Given that we're phasing the COVID twenty nineteen, this item tonight, if authorized under the Texas Health and Safety Code, Title II, Subtitle F, Chapter one twenty-one, Section one two one point zeros over three, also known as the Local Public Health Reorganization Act, allows municipalities and other local governments to create health departments and empower them with a task of making necessary improvements and provide services to promote the public health. Subject to availability, funds of the department may provide essential health services for any underserved segment of the municipality. These services include, but are not limited to identifying community disease, uh, and the word we use there is epidemiology, uh, and surveillance, which is close observation, especially of suspected viruses. Uh, the health department is also tasked with informing, educating, empowering the community with respect to these health issues. The department is also obligated to work together with other local, state, and federal agencies to engage and mobilize community partnerships and identify and solve community health problems, as well as developing policies and plans that support, uh, community efforts to improve health. What I'm translating that to is, it puts us in a position where we can more effectively communicate with our peers and colleagues within health departments and exchange information across the board. Uh, pre- previously, we've never had a condition of COVID where CDC is releasing almost sometimes daily update two, three times per day. Uh, and this puts us in a situation where we're always running and trying to catch up to the information that's being put out. This resolution will allow us to use our epidemiology and our surveillance tools at our disposal, uh, to try and get ahead of what we call clusters or hotspots in, in other languages. Uh, I am open to questions. I also asked, uh, Dr. McCormick to join, uh, if any questions, I'm not sure if he was able to join us tonight.
I do see.
This was, this was, this was my loss, this, this.
And I do see Dr. McCormick there. Dr. McCormick, you're unmuted, so, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I, I just wanna support, uh, what Dr. Rodriguez is saying, um, that the, first of all, the importance of this move to, uh, create a, um, uh, for people to stay in place is highly important. I think we can all see the result, the consequences of not doing that. We can see it in, uh, in the early days in China, we can see it in Spain and Italy. And so I applaud the, um, the efforts here to get ahead of this curve. And, uh, we, in- indeed, we can see what's happening in New York and Washington. So, this is, uh, a really important move. What Dr. Rodriguez is proposing is a way to allow us to start to identify, uh, cases of infection or even suspected cases when, if we don't have sufficient, uh, uh, methods of, of, uh, of testing. And to be able to, uh, track that to those cases and the, the area around it for people who have new cases, to provide education, um, and, uh, increased surveillance in those areas. We did this, uh, in, in, in Cameron County, in, with the H one N one outbreak in two thousand nine, and it was highly effective. We were able to, uh, communicate with people in specific areas where we saw the hotspots and to help them understand the importance of, uh, at that time, of not going to, uh, unnecessarily to clinics and hospitals, because that would spread the, the H one even more. This is a much more infectious disease, and it's more lethal than, uh, than the H one N one ever was. So I, I applaud this effort, and we at the School of Public Health are quite ready to work with the city to help, uh, make this happen, to provide our resources and our skills, uh, to be able to do this.
So this is, um, Dr. Galant, I just wanted to, uh, thank Dr. McCormick for dialing in. I wholeheartedly support what Dr. Rodriguez is suggesting, and I do wanna say that I was around with the H one N one that Dr. McCormick is talking about. And I saw firsthand the skill and efficiency with which, uh, they led us through that crisis, and as he said, this one is much worse. So, um, I would wholeheartedly support what Dr. Rodriguez is suggesting. And I would like to add that, um, in looking what the Senate package, or Senate is considering as a emergency package for aid, uh, I think surveillance is gonna be one of the things that is, is, uh, going to be, um, reimbursed. So, um, I applaud y'all for thinking ahead and, um, tapping into resources that are probably gonna be, um, trickle down to the local communities.
Do you have any motions?
I would, I just wanna agree and echo the sentiment that Dr. Galant is talking about. We are very grateful that we have these experts, um, and, as a resource and leading us, and so often I hear, oh, well, how do you know about these things? Truthfully, I don't, but I have very good experts advising us. So we are very, very grateful for their leadership, and thank you for leading our city, Dr. McCormick. Um, I would like to make the motion to approve.
Motion to.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once we have agenda item number four, consideration and action to amend the city of Brownsville Public Health Policy Manual to allow the establishment of a sick leave pool.
Mayor, uh, undecided, will allow Marina Silesia and Edna Sabata to present the concept of what we're proposing. I can answer any questions after this meeting.
Mayor and Commissioners, in accordance with our organizational structure, our culture, and values in support of our long-term continuity plans and our employees, we are requesting to amend our current personnel policy manual. The current policy manual does not allow for the establishment of a sick leave pool. So requesting your consideration, this would create a three-tier sick leave pool and event structured as follows. One tier would be the executive positions, which would include management directors and assistant directors. The other level would be middle management, which would include supervisors and managers. And then the other pool level would be the frontline labor force, which would include all labor and clerical positions. And so the city of Brownsville recognizes that there's a necessity to create a sick leave pool and bank to help cover employees who may need to legalize the sick leave because of current health issues and then also in light of the COVID nineteen. Um, we, the, also to take in mind for those who cannot telework for those arrangements. We also have had our care team members, members who represent different departments, who have done research on sick leave pools in, uh, neighboring communities. They've also done research on the statewide levels. There's several state organizations that have sick leave pools, and also the federal department, and took best practices to, to formulate that. And as part of the care team, they also recommend the establishment of a sick leave. Currently, the Department of Labor is developing a pool for the employers who have less than five hundred employees, so that the, that would be an establishment of a sick leave bank. Unfortunately, because we have more than that number of employees, um, we wouldn't be able to qualify if that's approved. And so we would like to provide this tool and, and be flexible, um, to, to provide that for employees.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and have a second?
Second.
I have a mo- motion and a second, any further discussion?
How would it work exactly? So then each tier pulls all their sick leave in, and then it, um, as it's used, or how, how would it work exactly?
Yes, as far as the tiers, it is a voluntary basis, and so if an individual, it's voluntary, if an individual would like to donate, they can go ahead and donate, but it has to be within that tier. So if it's middle management, it would need to be supervisors and managers. If they would like to donate, it goes into the pool. And if somebody needs to, uh, request it, it would have to be an FMLA qualifying event. And we are still, uh, working on the guidelines, but it would have to be tied to an FMLA qualifying event to be able to, to, uh, withdraw from the pool, from the bank.
Okay, any, any other questions? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those by? One, opposition, Commissioner Nice? Commissioner Nice, are you opposed?
I said aye, aye.
Oh, okay. Motion, sorry. Motion passes, thank you.
Once we have agenda item number five, consideration and action to amend Declaration of Local Public Health Development for Public Health Emergency.
Is anyone presenting?
Uh, this item is being presented, uh, so, uh, Helen worked with, uh, the mayor, Art also engaged Dr. McCormick on deciding. So, the mayor and Art and Helen can speak to this. I think Dr. McCormick could also, um, provide his perspective, and then the commission certainly could chime in on, on the measures and, and what type of collective decision-making y'all wanna make on this, on this item.
If I may briefly, um, as we saw yesterday, the, the, the county judge took some pretty strong and, and decisive measures that covers our county. Uh, the intent of our, of our, um, resolution or declaration, uh, is to kind of make sure that we covered everything that affects Brownsville. Based on our last order, which was issued a week ago, uh, expires today, uh, it's, it's prudent for us to extend that for another two weeks. And, um, this was sent out, Helen, I believe, uh, can say when it was sent out, but this should have been sent out to all the commission, uh, a couple hours ago and when it was finalized, uh, for input and, and to see if there's anything else that, that needs to be added. Uh, for the most part, it's taking our, our previous order and either removing certain items that are no longer applicable because of the county judge's order, and, um, making sure that we do have some other things that are applicable specifically to our city. So that should, uh, Helen, you wanna, you wanna discuss anything else?
As the mayor, as the mayor discussed, um, there are some measures that were eliminated because they were taken up by, um, Cameron County. I will go through some of the changes that were made. Additional language was picked up, um, due to Dallas's, Dallas County's measures that were adapted, um, recently. And so we were just taking the best-case scenario of different types of measures. Um, for example, um, with the difference between the, the measures that were adopted on March seventeenth, we reduced, we took out the occupancy, as you recall, previously we had an occupancy, uh, a fifty percent for restaurants and bars. Um, that was eliminated with, uh, the Cameron County's measures, because we, they are not allowed to congregate within restaurants any longer. Number two, uh, we maintained the second item measure that we had on March seventeenth, where restaurants and bars, delivery and takeout is strongly encouraged. Downtown city metered parking shall be, will be immediately suspended in order to support these measures. Parking, areas within shopping areas are strongly encouraged to create takeout and delivery designated parking spaces. And we also are, um, allowing, uh, the metered parkings to maintain.
And as, as clarification, also Helen, on the restaurants and bars, uh, because of, of the governor's orders, as well as the county judge's orders, the restaurants, uh, shall be permit, uh, shall permit delivery, pickup, and takeout only. It's no longer encouraged, that is the orders from the governor. So that got changed to only, uh, on hospitals. Uh, it, the, uh, which is on page one, it, it talks about all elective medical, surgical, and dental procedures are prohibited anywhere in the city. So that's for elective, uh, surgeries or procedures, and that's based on the Dallas order. We, we took that in from, from the Dallas order. Um, also on religious and worship services, that's gonna be by video and teleconference. Uh, any sort of in-person staff is limited to ten people or less. And then Helen, did you cover, uh, daycares, uh, both adult and child daycares?
Uh, yes. Going back to the, the first one, so the restaurant, um, shall permit delivery, pickup, and takeout only. Bingo establishments are closed, so that was the, uh, March seventeenth measure that would stay the same. What was added, what the major, mayor just said, religious and worship services will only be provided by video and teleconference. Religious institutions must limit in-person staff to ten people or less when preparing or conducting video or teleconference services. And all individuals must follow the social distancing, distancing guidelines, including the six-foot social distancing. This is similar to what Dallas County recently, um, approved. The next one, all elective medical, the, instead of effective, it's elective. All elective medical surgery, surgical and dental procedures are prohibited anywhere in the city. Hospitals, ambulatory surgery centers, dental offices, and other medical services are directly, are directed to identify procedures that are deemed elective by assessing which procedures can be postponed or canceled based on patient risk, considering the emergency need for redirection of resources to COVID nineteen response. That's also the same, uh, what was recently adopted by Dallas County. Um, childcare centers shall not have more than ten children per room and comply with the six-foot social distancing requirements, as well, as well as all state requirements. We understand that the state at this time has instituted, um, additional requirements.
Okay, then.
Next one, adult daycare centers shall not. Next one, adult daycare centers shall not have more than ten adults per room and comply with the six-foot social distancing requirement you would add as well as adheres to state requirements. Next, all city libraries are closed. All City of Brownsville residents are strongly encouraged to use online services and driving services while doing business with the city. Brownsville Bus Service, B Metro, is continuing to implement social distancing. We have added no more than ten individuals may ride a bus at one time. Next, the Brownsville South Potters Island Airport is limiting access into the terminal building to ticketed passengers only. That was the same as the March seventeenth measure. We have added, all airport users are strongly encouraged to participate in airport provided thermal scan, which is new. Next, city events are canceled until further notice. This is similar to the first measure that we were adopted, except in that measure, we called it, we identified effectively on March seventeenth and we said until further notice. So this is just part of that. General public and private community events are canceled until further notice. Next, the city commission will continue to meet remotely. We strongly encourage members of the public to watch proceedings on www.cov.us. So this is new that we've instituted, given the situation. Next, in-person meetings of city advisory boards, commission and bureaus are canceled, however, meetings may occur remotely. That's also within the institution of rainbow meetings. Next, the city encourages members of the public to seek city services through the city's website or by telephone. Next, private events on city or private facilities are canceled until further notice. This is important. I'm gonna repeat this one. Private events on city or private facility are canceled until further notice based on deposit or the facility rental can be refunded or applied for reschedule now. Next, this is, the next measure is consistent with the state of Texas. Boarding. Any action for eviction to recover possession of residential property under chapter twenty-four of the Texas Property Code and rule five-ten of the Texas Rules of Civil Procedure shall be in accordance with Texas Supreme Court Order issued March nineteenth, twenty twenty, which states the following. No trial, hearing or other proceeding may be conducted and all deadlines are told until April nineteenth, twenty twenty. B, a writ of possession may issue, but the posting of the written warning required by twenty-four point zero zero six one D one of the property code and the execution of the writ of possession may not occur until after April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. And the deadlines in rules five-ten point eight D one through D two are told while this order remains in effect. And C, new filings may be accepted, but the time period in rule five-ten point four A ten is suspended and issuance and service citation may not occur until after April nineteenth, twenty twenty. Next, this is similar to the March seventeenth notice. The peace officers, City of Brownsville Health Inspectors, Code Enforcement slash Ordinance Officers slash Inspectors, Traffic Specialists and Brownsville Fire Marshal are hereby authorized to enforce this order. A violation of this order is a class team misdemeanor punishable by a fine not exceeding five hundred dollars in accordance with the City of Brownsville Court of Ordinances, Chapter one, section one point one three, general penalty. Unless otherwise stated, these measures shall be in place until April seventh, twenty twenty. Thank you.
So I would ask the city that when this is adopted or approved, that it be placed on the Facebook and all social media outlets immediately? Because yesterday, when the counties was posted, I probably netted about over a hundred questions asking about specific businesses and things like that that were gonna be shut down or falling into that category. The information took a while to pop up online. So I would just ask that the city be as transparent as possible and get this message out to everybody that they can. And city manager, if somebody has a question about, I'm having a wedding, I'm having a this, I'm having a that. My daughter, her birthday is tomorrow. Happy birthday, Abigail. I love you. And everything is completely careful. That we're capable of being her room all day long, which is really sad. But so many people have questions and things about their lives and how they're changing. Where can they call city manager? Who can they talk to if they can't find one of us on our social media outlets?
Ms. Brenna, you need to unmute?
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I wanna allow Mr. Omedo to speak on this, just so that he can get him and his staff to get some some proper credit for the efforts that they're doing over at Communications. So Felipe, can you please speak to how we're handling all communications and all questions?
Back to me, city manager. We have a major difficulty with communication and marketing. We have launched several resources on many things that we update two times, two times a day. And we also created the BTXcares dot com website. As soon as the situation got necessarily worse, we started to create this as a resources for the community to provide all the information that that can be up to date and also provide resources for the community in terms of accessing information on it is for business assistance, reaching out to access a partner association or resources for that. So there's several options that are out there in terms of getting the information. And we're actively pushing PSAs and information on our Facebook page as well to connect with the community and let it know the importance of number one, be a social contributor. And number two, where to get information, this kind of thing.
Hey, this is Helen, W City Manager. And Felipe, maybe you can give the mayor and commission some numbers that you have. I think you do have a substantial increase not only in civic alert, but BTX cares. And so I think that would be good information to share with the commission and our viewers. I know there's, you said there's a hundred and three people watching us right now. And I think that's wonderful. With regard to facility facilities, we have been getting questions. Residents still can go to five four six help if they do not have web or online access. We have ramped that up due to the number of COVID and other cases called. And we are dealing with it. We receive sometimes emails. And so we are responding as quickly as possible because we understand that they, you know, some certain weddings or events are being postponed. And so we need to be cognizant of our families in Brownsville.
And so I
To, to add to that, this is Felipe again. We've had on the main page, specifically on the COVID updates, over twenty-two thousand page views. And that's, that's as of nine o'clock this morning. And then on the BTXcares website, which just launched three days ago, we already have fourteen thousand page views.
Which is amazing. And I just wanna commend the city for your outreach to the public. And just to remind the public that each one of us, the commission, city management, all city staff are here for you as a recourse during these hard times with so many questions. Everything is changing day to day. Sometimes I get questions and I don't know the answers to because things change so fast. But we're here to answer your questions and we're here to be with you. We will only make it through this together. So we have to stick together and just be here for each other. And, you know, if you need something, we are here for you. Just communicate to us and we ask for your patience because this is a very crazy time, obviously, for all of us. I wanna thank city staff for all of the things that they have been doing. You all have been doing an amazing job and you all don't get credit enough. The entire emergency management team and our city management, I am so proud to represent the city of Brownsville and to have you all by my side. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
I would like to echo all of that. I really like the BTXcares. I think your staff is doing a great job in emergency management as well as that. And of course, our health department, who's outstanding at this time.
I agree.
Hey, y'all are doing a great job. Helen, is there, are we gonna discuss the testing tomorrow at some point or when will that?
Um, city manager, I don't know if you want me to take that question one more minute?
Full of suggestion, Mayor, that, so as part of the measures that are here, one of the things that the commission can provide direction on is, here we have items that are measures. There also could be items that the commission can express support for. Talk to our city attorney about that. And for example, if the commission want, when you put out your measures last week, one of the things you gave broad direction on and then we worked this past week before was the telework plan. So the commission, for example, could say that you all support, for example, proactive measures, which is testing, that staff look into the community. I think that a broad statement from the community like that will be very beneficial. So the staff work with clarity that we understand the commission has that type of direction for us to be moving. That's just a suggestion.
Okay. Is there any, any other questions?
This is Dr. McCormick. Could I make a comment that may help people to give, give the population image of what we're dealing with? I think the head of WHO put it very well. We are fighting a fire blindfolded. We have transmission ongoing between people that we cannot detect. And the only way we can prevent that transmission is the kind of procedures that you are putting in place now. And that's the only thing that's going to prevent us looking like, for example, Spain, which I saw today, people lying in the hallways of hospitals coughing. We don't wanna see that in our population. We don't have to. And I think these measures will go a long way to helping to mitigate that. So again, I applaud what you're doing and support it because I know, having dealt with many outbreaks in the past in many parts of the world, what this kind of panic can occur. I was associated with or investigated an outbreak of a hundred and fifty of meningitis in Brazil, bacterial meningitis, which is about twenty percent mortality. And the level of panic across the country was pretty amazing. So I think this will go a long way in helping people, giving them comfort that the city and the county are doing everything they can to, to help not make that happen here.
Thank you, Dr. McCormick. Any other discussion from the commission? Any other?
I do, Ms. Mayor. I would like to say that we as a city are very, very blessed for many reasons. But I think many cities would give their right arm to have a school of public health amongst them at a time like this. And not just any school of public health, but one whose professors, like Dr. McCormick, have an entire career and life of working with epidemics across the globe. So we are very blessed to have them amongst us. And we are also very, it is very important to keep them in our corner and on our side and in our ears to listen to what they recommend. To that end, I hope that Art or you, Mr. Mayor, talk about the drive-through testing that will begin tomorrow. Because one of, that's very important, that has really saved a lot of communities, is mass testing for COVID nineteen. And I hope that, I hope that you do talk about that. And I compliment you on your hard work to accomplish it. And would like commission direction and support to expand and develop that as we move forward into more testing, in more testing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions from the commission?
I think it'll be, it's important that we work with the county to clarify the order that was issued yesterday in terms of who can work and who can't. I know I've gotten probably a hundred plus emails and calls from people that are afraid of going to work because they're gonna get pulled over and either fined or arrested because they cannot, they don't have a letter from their employer that's showing that they're working at an essential business or your job is essential to what's being done at their company. So I think it's important that we communicate to the, to our citizens that, you know, what, you know, what to expect and what they really need, you know, in terms of compliance with the order.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Do I have any motions on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
But don't we need, don't we wanna talk about drive-through or are you gonna talk about it again?
Well, for the purposes of this item, it's for the declaration itself, Commissioner, so I just wanna make sure we get this passed.
Okay, no problem.
Which I would like. We can do so after this. But we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Dr. Rodriguez, and I'm gonna ask Council if it's allowed, but Dr. Rodriguez, can you give an update on the measures being taken that will start up tomorrow?
If I may, a spoke warning. We've already dealt with all the businesses that have been noticed.
So then Council, you're saying that we cannot get an update, so we should move to adjourn?
Right.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Um. If we could have looked at information on the, go ahead, Dr. Gowan. I think it's very
I was gonna say, Renee, Mr. DeClaus, is there a way to include it via public comment? Because it is important information.
I, we can't include it, but we can notice it. If it would have been done during the portion of the public comment, which I believe no one signed up for, that would be perfectly okay. Unfortunately, I believe no one signed up and there's no one that asked for any public comment at all. I believe that these things are important. I agree with you, Commissioner, but we need to be able to put on the agenda, even if it's an hour before the meeting.
Then I would ask that Mr. Omedo, in conjunction with Dr. Rodriguez, put out some sort of documentation on that. Okay, do I have any motions to adjourn?
I don't have any. The motion to adjourn.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, guys.
Bye. And adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for being here, everyone.
Thank you.